Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 21 City Council Meeting. Could I please have Rich Angel come forward from New Beginnings Church for the invocation?
Good evening. First of all, Pastor Billy sent his apologies, and I've got some big shoes to fill, but I'll do my best anyway.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to start, first of all, by just acknowledging what an honor and a privilege it is to live in a city like Los Manos where the city leaders actually allow and honor you, and honor you, and allow prayer before their meetings. And I just know that this is the right place to live because you will honor those who honor you. Before we start the meeting tonight, we want to pray for our mayor and for the council members, for the city administrators, city staff, who have all worked so hard in preparation for this meeting. I know that a lot of work goes in before the meeting. This is the decision time, but the work has been done and done diligently. And we just thank you, Lord, for these servants that work so hard to build a city and design a plan that will serve you and serve its people. We also, Lord, thank you for the firefighters, men and women, and policemen and women, first responders, who put their lives on the line on a daily basis so that we, the citizens of Los Manos, can live in safety and be protected. We ask too that you bless their families, bless their lives, financially bless them, spiritually bless them, because they do so much and give so much for the community. We also, Lord, pray for the citizens of Los Manos. We pray that the citizens will read the Bible and recognize that Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, taught us to love one another, to love each other, and to help those in need. Help us to be more like Jesus with skin on. Help us to really stand up for you in this community. May all the power and the glory and the honor go to the Father in heaven. We pray in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I'd like to call to order the August 21, 2019, Meeting of the Los Manos City Council. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag?
Leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Maloney, roll call, please.
Fariah Johnson Santos-Jones. Louis Valalta.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Mrs. Lewis.
Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Lewis to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. The public forum, members of the public, may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Hello. I did bring a PowerPoint, if that's okay, I could present it. If not, then I have a...
Can we key that up real quick? Or is that...
I'll just go ahead and do the verbal presentation.
Okay, go ahead, and then Stephanie, if you'd like to come back, we can...
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All right.
I do have some informational packets.
Okay, would you give them to the city clerk, then?
Good evening, council. My name is Stephanie Gonzalez. I'm here with the California Health Collaborative, Merced County Tobacco Control Program.
My name is Kami Kirkendall. I'm a junior at Pacheco High School and a youth member with the CHC.
So, the California Health Collaborative is a nonprofit organization. We were founded in 1982, and our mission is to improve lives by changing health and wellness. So, today, we wanted to come here today to share some information about secondhand smoke. If you are familiar with secondhand smoke, secondhand smoke is what comes out of a combustible, whether it be a cigarette, cigar, a tobacco product. And cigarette secondhand smoke is classified as a toxic air contaminant and contains over 7,000 chemicals, including 70 chemicals known to cause cancer. Children exposed to secondhand smoke have a greater risk to develop asthma, bronchitis, and even ear infections. So, the U.S. Surgeon actually stated that there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand One of the projects of our program is actually working with youth. So, we do have a youth coalition, and I'll go ahead and let Kami talk a little bit about her experience and what she does with the youth coalition.
In the youth coalition, we participate in activities such as community events, leadership activities, and data collection, including tobacco litter cleanups, photo voice projects, and advocacy activities. We as well have participated in a tobacco litter cleanup activity to see the impact of tobacco litter in our parks and found that in Pacheco Park, within 40 minutes, we found 1,304 tobacco litter. And then in Colorado Park, in just about 30 minutes, we found 261 tobacco litter. As a part of Action Youth, secondhand smoke and learning about it has incredibly impacted me. I mean, as a young child, I've always been in the, like, have experienced secondhand smoke personally, with my mother and my father using tobacco products. And me, being an impressionable child, not knowing what these products can do, not only just in, like, just being around those products in general, and how it can affect me and how I am and how I develop and everything. And thankfully, when I was growing up, that there was a program in my school that talked about this, that got me aware of how to keep myself safe. But thinking about this, about how young kids are so impressional, really just breaks my heart because these kids can walk around in our parks today in Los Manos and see so many younger teens or adults or parents just smoking around them. And to them, they're gonna think that's okay, and something that they might be interested in doing when they're older, or something that they're curious about because they are children. They're going to want to do what they see. So, for me, secondhand smoke has been such a big issue in my life, like, having younger siblings and myself, and having, growing up and experienced it myself. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
So, one of the things that we wanted to talk to you about today was, our program works with communities to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke by providing education, but one of those ways that the community could actually change that is by, you know, creating smoke-free communities. Some of the benefits of a smoke-free public outdoor policy include improve the health and the well-being of the community members, it reduces exposure to secondhand smoke, and it reduces the risks for fires. It also creates less litter, and it creates a healthier environment. Over 113 cities and counties across California have already adopted a policy like this, and we're able to provide some sample policy language and more additional information.
I would like for the council to consider passing a policy that prohibits smoking in public outdoor areas for the city of Los Manos, and even possibly coming back once again to further this information and show you our studies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, we're here. If not, I could also, my contact information is in the informational packets that will be distributed.
So, if it's okay with you, we would like you to come back on an agendized item.
Okay.
And that way, you can present your PowerPoint and anything else that these fine young people would like to present, these high school students would like to present, and we can schedule some time, and because we're limited to the five minutes with the open session or the public forum, and we'll give you the time, more time if you need it.
Perfect.
And so, if you would just contact our city clerk, and we'll arrange a time for you to come back.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
And thank you, students, for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Claudia Corchado, and I am the program manager for a program called Cultiva la Salud, which translates into cultivating health. So, one, I am here to show support to the California Health Collaborative and to the young people for smoke-free areas. But two, is to just introduce myself and to let you know that we received a little grant from Sutter Hospital to do a leadership component piece that we have for the residents of Los Manos. So, we have rented your community center. We are there every Thursday from 10 to 12. We started two weeks ago. We started out with five. Last Thursday, we had 14. Tomorrow, I expect like 28. It is a leadership program that is based around obesity prevention, but through policy systems and environmental changes. And it's mostly targeting residents that don't necessarily understand local government, what it means to be engaged. So, we literally take them by the hand, and we break down the different systems. So, I just wanted to come introduce myself, let you know that we will be stopping by because it is part of their homework. So, when we do, don't be afraid because it is gonna be part of their process because once we're done, we want them to continue to keep advocating for safe places, you know, for physical activity, for healthy food, access to clean cold water, whether it's in the schools. So, we will be taking them by the hand, coming to meetings, to the city council meetings, to the school board meetings, and supporting any other efforts that will increase their health in the city of Los Manos. I do have some information around our program, but I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself. I am a transplant of Dos Palos years ago. And so, it's very exciting to see your beautiful city thrive as much as it has. So, thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you all soon.
Did you send us all an email with the times that you're there during the community center?
Absolutely.
Okay, and maybe reach out to Stephanie and how you could involve the high school students with the tobacco-free also?
Absolutely.
To incorporate into healthy living?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay, so anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, city staff. Rondolo with UC Merced Small Business Development Center. I'm pleased to announce that we're starting up our small business workshop startup classes again in conjunction and in partnership with the city of Los Manos and UC Merced SBDC. Our next one will be Wednesday, September 4, here in the City Hall lobby, from 6:30 to 7:30. And this is a free workshop that we provide for them to help them, anybody that's thinking about starting a business, whether they have a concrete idea, or whether they just feel like they want to start a business, and we help them by providing the framework and the information that they need. Space is limited because the room is limited, and so we figure about 10 people will fit in there at the most. So, to register, you go to UCMercedSBDC.com and click on Training Events, and you'll see our event that's coming up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seen or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we'll go on to the consent Consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, will vote it on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have...
Before I read the consent agenda, I'd just like to state for the record that Council Member Fariah arrived at 7:05.
Okay.
And the items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 217399 through 217702 in the amount of $480,652.86. Minutes for the July 17, 2019, City Council Meeting. Approval of response letters from the Los Manos City Council and the Los Manos Police Chief regarding Merced County Civil Grand Jury Final Report 2018-2019 regarding the Los Manos Police Department. City Council Resolution Number 6121 authorizing a ward of construction contract to Sinclair General Engineering Construction, Inc., in the amount of $881,799, with a 20% contingency in the amount of $176,360 for Fire Station 1 and 2 ADA and State Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. City Council Resolution Number 6122 authorizing a ward of construction contract to United Pavement Maintenance, Inc., in the amount of $1,116,831.35, with a 20% contingency in the amount of $223,366 for the 2019 Street Rehabilitations Project. City Council Resolution Number 6123 approving and adopting final tract map number 2018-03, Shaughnessy Village Phase Number 2, and accompanying improvement agreement, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6124 approving and adopting final tract map number 2018-03, Shaughnessy Village Phase Number 3, and accompanying improvement agreement, Stonefield Home, Inc. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member that would like to remove an item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move Item D.
Item D, okay. All right, do you have, Mrs. Lewis, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus Item D.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones to approve the consent agenda as stated, minus Item D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The request for pulling this is that I really wanted to give staff my deepest congratulations and thank you for moving this project forward. We just started receiving money, I think, from Measure V and some other states' money from highway taxes, which afforded the city to be able to put sidewalks and streets over on the state streets. From, I think it's from Colorado over to, can't think of the last one, but Vermont, those state streets in there. Those houses were built back in the early 60s.
Let's go back a little more.
In the 50s? Okay. In the late 50s, early 60s. And I think the residents and their families are deserving to have sidewalks to walk on in that area. So, I'm very proud of our staff working to get that money, and I know it's been a long time coming, and it's been a concern of mine for a long time. So, thank you very much, Mark Fajian, for working on that project to make it come forward, and to the rest of our city staff for funding this project, and I'm looking forward to the completion of it.
And just let me add, I'm also pleased with that project. Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. And never shall city planning be done that way ever again. And it was during a time that, I guess, at the time, they thought they were doing the right thing by not putting sidewalks in, but it was, as we find out later, people have to suffer for decisions, and it's taken this long, over 70 years, for them to have sidewalks. So, very pleased it's happening. Okay, Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item D as submitted on the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones to approve Item D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to... Public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing, to receive public comment, consideration of general plan amendment 2019-01, zone change 2019-01, a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities for a child development center located at 1624 San Luis Street, APN 428070001. Item 7A1, City Council Resolution Number 6113, approving the general plan amendment 2019-01 for the Child Development Center to be re-designate approximately 1.33 acres of park to professional office located at 1624 San Luis Street, more specifically identified as portion of assessors parcel number 428070001, and finding that the disposition of the property is consistent with the city's general plan. And item 7A2, ordinance number 1103, amending the official zoning map by rezoning property for the Los Manos Child Development Center from park to professional office, P-O, on approximately 1.33 acres, located at 1624 San Luis Street, specifically, more specifically identified as a portion of APN 428070001. And the first item is an action motion, and the second item is a second reading and adoption. And we're gonna go to Director Elms. Anything to state?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, this is a second reading, as the mayor said, and if, as you can recall, on August 7, the city council provided a motion of intent to adopt Resolution 6113 and waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number 1173 by title, and then continued the public hearing to today's date, August 21. The city of Los Manos is requesting a general plan amendment and a zone change to re-designate approximately 1.33 acres, which is the premises of the Child Development Center located at 1624 San Luis Street. And the purpose of this is due to the sale of the Child Development Center to the Merced County Community Action Agency, and this is to allow that organization to continue their operation of a child daycare facility. The remainder of the park will remain with a park land use designation, and the action before you tonight is requesting that just the premises of 1624 San Luis Street, which is, consists of 1.33 acres, be rezoned and re-designated to professional office. So, with that, staff is asking the city council to adopt Resolution Number 6113 to approve a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve general plan amendment 2019-01, and then waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1173 by title to rezone the property at 1624 San Luis Street from park to professional office. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, this time, does council have any questions? Okay, I will now open up the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6113 and ordinance number 1173. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on those two items? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and council, Mrs. Lewis.
There are no other questions of council. I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6113 as read by title.
Mr. Freya.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, second by Fariah, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6113. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion for a second reading of...
Waive the second reading.
Wait, waive the second reading of ordinance number 1173 as read by title.
Mr. Freya.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Fariah, for the waiving of the second reading of ordinance number 1173. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1173 as read by title.
Mr. Freya.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Fariah, for the adoption of ordinance number 1173. Roll call, vote?
Fariah?
Yes.
Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Let's go on to Item B, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of remending Chapter 3, Title 9 of the Los Manos Municipal Code to allow child daycare centers in all zoning districts except industrial zones, subject to conditional use permit. B1, ordinance number 1174, amending Article 37, Chapter 3, Title 9 of Title 9 of the Los Manos Municipal Code relating to child daycare facilities and related to zoning classifications and definitions. And this is a second reading and adoption. And this is a second reading and adoption for ordinance number 1174. Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Councils. So back on August 7th, the City Council waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number 1174 by title. This particular ordinance is specifically designed to address concerns related to child daycare facilities. What we had found, and this was through the dissolvement of the Child Development Center, we realized, we actually researched and found that we did not have any other regulations or any other sections of the zoning code which related to child daycare facilities other than the professional office zoning district. So we felt that it was necessary, now that we were rezoning the Child Development Center, that we needed to address child daycare facilities within this community, within the city. So we developed this ordinance, which is a revision within the municipal code, within the zoning code, that sets forth standards for child daycare facilities. This includes defining small family daycare homes, large family daycare homes, and daycare centers. And I won't go through what all those definitions are, and because that's what we had done for the first reading. But with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt ordinance number 1174 to amend Article 37, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to child daycare facilities and related zoning code classifications and definitions. And that concludes my report, and please let me know if you have any questions.
But it's just not a given they're going to get it. They still have to go through a conditional use permit?
Yes, so as, yes, the previous presentation I had gone through, so a small family daycare will meet state regulations, which does not require a business license from the city. Large family daycares will now be streamlined, and it'll be an administrative permit through the Community and Economic Development Department, and then daycare centers will require a conditional use permit.
Okay, excellent. Okay, any questions of Director Elms at this point? Okay, I'm now going to open a public hearing on ordinance number 1174. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and do I have a motion on, this is a second reading and adoption, two motions, waiving the second reading. Mr. Faria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd move to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1174 as read by title.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Faria, second by Mrs. Santos, for the waiving of the second reading of ordinance number 1174. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Faria?
I now move to adopt ordinance number 1174 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Faria, second by Mrs. Santos, to adopt ordinance number 1174. Roll call vote?
Faria?
Yes.
Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walto?
Yes, motion passes. Let's go on to Item 8, Consideration of Nomination to Merced County Association of Governance, MCAG, Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee. And I was not available for interviews, so I'm going to turn this item over to Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, yesterday, myself and Councilmember Brett Jones interviewed Mr. Cates for this position and found him capable, very willing, and able to serve on this Measure V Committee for the citizens oversight. So with that stated, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Cates to be a member of the Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee.
Okay, and, all right, next is question, Mrs. Santos? Do you like to send it?
Oh, I can second that. It was the one from before.
Oh, okay, all right.
It was on before.
You okay?
Oh, I'm good. It was just on from before.
All right. I saw your name come up. Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, second by Mrs. Santos, for the approval of John Cates to the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Measure V process, with the two people doing the interviews yesterday of Mr. Jones and Mrs. Lewis. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to... Paper's sticking together. Okay, Item 9, Advisement of Public Notices, and we have two reports. Director Elms?
So the first public hearing is a site plan review, number 2019-03, and this is for Mr. Jose Telles. This is for the commercial development of 5,156 square foot building. This would be located at 1101 F Street. Then the next item is a mobile food vendor, number 2019-06, for Kenneth Lambert, doing business as Biggins Texas Barbecue. This particular mobile unit will be located at 520 West I Street, which is Los Banas Memorial Hospital. These public hearings will be held on Wednesday, August 28th, at 7:00 PM, here in the council chambers, and that concludes my report.
Is he going to be there every day?
No, it'll be on call as the hospital requests. So based on his request to be there by Sutter.
So when the hospital wants barbecue?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So it's mostly, from my understanding, mostly for employee appreciation and just a little change-up from cafeteria food at the hospital, but it'll be open to the public and therefore it is necessary for him to have a mobile food permit.
It's one of those locale things, no cholesterol or what? No, okay. All right. So, any questions on the two items of public notice? Okay, let's go on to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a plug for the Los Banas Firefighters Association. The 2019 Breast Cancer Awareness T-shirts are now on sale, so preorder yours by September 16th, and you can call, is this station one's phone number? I'm not sure, Mason. 827-7025 with any questions, so order your shirt now. That's it.
Okay, we won't call out the sizes right now, so, all right. Let's go on to Item 11, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governance, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. At this time, I have no report. We have some items that we're working on, but I don't have enough knowledge or information to pass on to the council at this time. As soon as I do, I will. Okay, let's go on to Item 12, City Council Member Reports, and tonight, we're going to start with Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate our fire department on the land dedication out off Ward and, what was that, what's the other street?
Gilbert Gonzalez.
Gilbert Gonzalez, for the new fire station, and I believe there's another component to that. All right, Emergency Operations Center.
Go ahead, Chief Hurley.
The plan is, the state funding to build a new fire station and emergency operations center with plans to make it a regional training facility for City of Los Banas and the region around Merced County and beyond.
Okay, thank you for that update. And again, congratulations, we had a nice turnout of our assemblyman and our senator for our district, and it was a really nice event, and we had a meet and greet with both of them back at our community center. I also just wanted to put a plug in for our Assemblyman Adam Gray. He's also working on Assembly Bill 1639, which has to deal with youth smoking. It looks like it's on the rise again with him using vaping, so I would assume that our assembly is going to pass that somewhere in the near future, and that will make it illegal for anyone to sell vaping materials to children under the age of 18. But other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Faria?
Thank you. Sorry for being late. We had the beginning band tonight, tonight. We've grown so much in Los Banas, we have to do it on two campuses. I was over at Creekside, so hundreds of children there, and that's just one-third of the children's starting band in the district. There are a lot of children in a lot of activities in Los Banas. It's a great place for families to be. Congratulations on the new fire station operations center. We thank our Senator Caballero and Assemblymember Gray, and our supervisor, Mr. Silveira, was there as well, and we all had a very nice celebration. Looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. We'll get a fire station south of Pacheco Boulevard for the first time, which will be a very big addition, and then the operations training, that's a really, that'll be a really nice thing, you know. So thanks to everyone helping to make that happen, staff, everybody was involved in all of that, and we appreciate it. You guys are working hard for us, and we thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I want to say congratulations also to the fire department, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jones? Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. And again, it's been mentioned several times about the fire station is a great event, and it's long overdue, and it's going to cut down on our response times when this is eventually built, and we'll have a training center and emergency management. So it's three things that are greatly needed in this community and on the west side, so it's fantastic. Thank you to Senator Caballero and Assemblyman Gray. And as the chief mentioned, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the fire department will be selling T-shirts, and they are how much? A piece? Yeah. Twenty?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars. So if you'd like to, just drop by Fire Station Number 1, and you can order your T-shirt. And with that, we will now go into closed session. Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, agency-designated representatives, City Manager Tarazis, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Banas Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local 1, AFS, CME, Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees, and Item 2, Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Title City Manager. Item B did not take place last week because, or last, two weeks ago because we did not have a full council, so we carried it forward. And so with that, if we have anything to report, we will do so when we return, and I'm going to read the adjournment, but we won't adjourn until we come back. Is that correct? Or adjourn? You can vote now? Okay, yes. Okay, I've just been informed that the closed session, Item A, will not be done this evening, so we will strike that, and we'll just be doing Item B. And so I'd like to go on to Item 14, Adjournment, and we can vote on this now, adjourned to 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 27, 2019, in the lounge at the Los Banas Community Center located at 645 7th Street, Los Banas, California, to attend the City of Los Banas Capital Improvement Plan 2020 through 2024 Workshop. And do I have a motion? Mr. Faria?
I'll move to adjourn to 5:00 PM, August 27, as stated by the mayor.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, motion by Faria, second by Lewis, to adjourn to 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 27, 2019. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried.